Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the school committee. It is June 16th. We're starting a little earlier than usual at 5:30.
Recording in progress.
We have a somewhat shorter agenda than usual after our last meeting, which was quite lengthy. We will be beginning today with administrative business, the consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Sure, I will.
Thank you Suzanne. Is there a second? Thank you Nancy. Any discussion first? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead. Oh, go ahead Suzanne.
Well, I just think I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Albert Libby, who we're awarding a Brookline High School diploma. He is eighty-seven years old and attended school in the 50s and I feel good that we're able to do this for him. So I am glad that the superintendent recommends that we give him a diploma.
I'm quite pleased with that as well. Anyone else?
David, I apologize. I don't have the agenda right in front of me, but I want to make sure that the grant from yesterday is not in the consent agenda because we did not vote on it.
So we do have as item number two, acceptance of grants. So we can remove that.
Yeah, please remove that because we didn't vote on it at finance yet.
All right, so the motion Suzanne, if you'll accept a friendly amendment, will be for the past record, June 9th, school committee meetings, the awarding of the Brookline High School diploma to Albert F. Libby, the Driscoll School project, change order 12, and then for high school project change orders.
David, I think there was also one change on the contract. It's the amendment to the contract with Ron Associates.
Yes, and the amendment to the contract of Ron Associates, yes. That is number eight on the consent agenda. All right, so.
The authorization is for seventeen thousand and sixty dollars, not the full amount.
All right, so now on to the votes. See Jennifer?
Of Spain.
Nancy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're voting. I'm sorry, I just came in.
We're voting on the consent agenda?
I'll vote yes on that.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Gillery?
Good evening, everyone. Excited to share our last superintendent's update for the year. We'll take you through our agenda as well as share some recap information with you. So we'll look at our district-wide updates, our eighth grade graduations, COVID-19 update, our spotlight on excellence, and then a 2021-22 school year recap. So for our updates, we're starting with the, again, we're getting certainly a lot of feedback and a lot of concern about the materials fee program, and I think the committee and I were very clear about our support for the program. But we also want to share that the enrollment of staff children has grown by ninety-two percent since school year 05-06. And this year, there were sixteen kindergarteners that were placed at this time. And we will continue monitoring our classroom sections and availability. And the second round of placement decisions will be committed on a rolling basis, but no later than mid-August. And then as far as an update on our deputy superintendent search, senior staff, along with committee member, conducted a second round of interviews this week and I await the information out of that interview session for my next actions. For strategic planning update, we are gearing up very solidly for this work. We will be working with a consultant using Desi's Planning for Success model. And our multi-year district plan will be created with our district leadership team and inclusive community planning team. The CPT will consist of students, staff, parents, guardians, caregivers, community members, as well as a rich mix of experiences and perspectives that mirror the district. The CPT will meet at least four times during the school year, and this will allow us to help envision the future of PSV. More information will be coming out in mid-August, but we will announce this opportunity to the community Friday. And then there'll be opportunity in mid-August for folks that have an interest in doing this to sign up. And we'll have more information about the selection process there. For eighth grade graduations, again, the year's wrapping up. We're sliding into home. Here's a list of the eighth grade promotion ceremonies. Baker is June 22nd. And everyone else, all the rest of our K8s are June 21st. And everybody is around the 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And so these are the initial dates, and then there are rain dates that are associated with those. And we want to congratulate all of the eighth graders for their hard work in moving up to ninth grade. For our COVID-19 update, we held our final COVID vaccine clinic of the year at Lincoln School. The number, so we want to thank certainly our nursing staff and our community partners, the Department of Health, for their work all year in supporting the various COVID clinics that we've had. This week, we have noticed a strong decline in our number of positive cases. That trend has continued. And as of mid-afternoon, our health department director has lifted the mask mandate, so that communication is going out or has gone out to our schools. So the mask mandate has been lifted by our health department, which means that we can return back to our mask-friendly and by our mask-friendly status. Next Monday, or Monday is Juneteenth. It's celebrated every year on June 19th to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States. And so there will be a Juneteenth celebration here in Brookline. Sunday, the Freedom March will begin at Ridley School and proceed to Brookline Avenue Playground, where the celebration will be held. The event is free, certainly to the public. It will feature food, entertainment, games, crafts, raffles, and music. The march begins at 10:00, I'm sorry, the march begins at 10:00 and the celebration begins at 11:00. So check out the community pages for more information there. And what we'd like to do at this point is do just a quick walkthrough of the year. It's hard to believe that we're getting ready to close this chapter and open another chapter. But we thought what we'd do is just do a, share a collection of some of the images at different parts of the year. So this is our July through September timeframe. We've certainly launched our Spotlight on Excellence during this time. There was the Driscoll groundbreaking ceremony. Certainly the full reopening after the hybrid and remote experience, new staff orientation, as well as launching classroom visits. So lots of activity in and around the public schools of Brookline. Our next slide encapsulates our October through December timeframe. And here, we saw BHS winning the state championship in soccer. Medco celebrated, sponsored, and HBCU fair. We had the launch of the STEM wing. And then, as well as, I think Lincoln's Pumpkin Fest is featured here amongst a few other things and classroom visits. Our next slide covers the period of January through March. And here we have Lunar New Year celebrations, as well as the Hundredth Day of School. Lots of play in the snow here as well. And then finally, for our April through June timeframe, we have a number of celebrations. School musicals, the Pride Sidewalk painting, the JFK celebration, we have the Baker Walkathon there. And then we also, I think, have the Runkle, I'm sorry, the Baker Walkathon, and then the Runkle Trout release is happening there. And then a few other images taken in and around the district. So I thought this would be a great way to sort of wrap up or give a synopsis of some of the experiences that we've had this year. At this point, we're going to move to our Spotlight on Excellence. And we have with us the Ridley School. For our last meeting of the year, we are pleased to shine the spotlight on excellence at the Florita Ruffin Ridley School, personified through two educator teams at FRR. The Access and Equity Team, as well as the Garden Team, educators at Ridley are at the forefront of serving their school community. The FRR Access and Equity Team works to remove barriers that might prevent students from accessing the full range of school and community programs. Through their work, all FRR students have equitable access to enrichment and service programs that complement and enhance the school experience. The FRR Garden Team promotes sustainability practices, spearheads the growing and harvesting of food in the garden, and just hosted a very successful salad day to showcase the importance of locally grown food. And I happened to, I think, visit during that day, and Ms. Buller took me around and showed me the, quite the harvest of lettuce that was gathered there at FRR. At this time, I'll turn the microphone over to Principal Buller so that she can tell us more about these two educator teams and introduce the teachers who have joined us this evening.
Thanks so much, Dr. Gillery. It's great to be back with everybody after we visited in April to talk a little bit about the Ruffin Ridley readers and leaders. And hopefully, some of the school committee members and viewers in the public have gotten a chance to stop by a Ruffin Ridley Reader and Leader Zoom. They just had a really amazing one last night in partnership with the Lincoln School all around pride and LGBTQ issues and things like that. And so we're really proud of all of our educators at our school, and I feel really excited to be able to share another set of phenomenal educators that work at our school through two different educator-led working groups that exist in our school. So like Dr. Gillery said, we have Randy Bradley Campbell and Nicole Chassy here to talk about the garden team. And then we'll have Sarah Chan and Alicia Poole and talk a little bit about our Access and Equity Team. So I'll step back and let Randy and Nicole take it over for the garden team.
Thanks so much, Jen and Dr. Gillery and school committee for having us here. It's exciting to share all this work with you. We have a really dedicated garden team at our school, which consists of Randy and me and our occupational therapist, Joanne Paschar, and fifth grade teacher Steph Barron, and second grade teacher Sarah Stanton. Our garden's also used by our extended day program and dayset program, and we have these incredible parent liaisons in Lucy Chi and Lisa Ting who help us out. So we're just gonna kind of give you a snapshot of the history of our garden and what we've been working on in the past couple of years.
So we wanted to start by providing a little bit of the background about where it all really started and talking a little bit about what happened before our renovation. Can you click forward? So before the renovation, a small group of teachers and parents who were spearheaded by Lauren O'Keen, who is a current EL teacher at Pierce, advocated for, constructed, and maintained three garden beds that were shared K through 8 on what was previously a woodchip wasteland. And we began creating cross-curricular and cross-grade garden connections through our first BF collaborative grant called Taking Learning Outdoors. And when we returned from the renovation, we returned to sixteen beds that presented great opportunities, but also heavy organizational challenges. But working with our many community partners, our PTO, Bootstrap Compost, the Brookline Department of Public Works, we expanded our capacity for compost and secured funding from Whole Foods Whole Kids Garden Grant to purchase the necessary tools and equipment to support a more robust school-wide gardening program. And this allowed us to partner with the Girl Scouts to start a summer garden that provides fresh produce to the Brookline Food Pantry each week as well.
And in 2020, we were very fortunate enough to be awarded a BEF grant called The Classroom is All Around Us. I wrote that grant with Lauren O'Keen and Tanya Paris, who are both teachers over at Pierce. And with this grant, what we really wanted to do was create a network for committed educators across the district who are interested in outdoor learning, and we really wanted to cross-pollinate what was going on. Pun intended, I think. And through that grant, we wanted to kind of take stock on what schools had in terms of their garden space and their physical structures. And we also wanted to create toolkits, both physical and digital, that we could share across the district. And we partnered with a group called Backyard Growers, which is out of Gloucester. And through them, we were able to learn about a program called Salad Days. So this is a program that really aims at getting every child in a school planting and harvesting and tasting local vegetables that they've grown. So we spearheaded our first Salad Days in 2021 for all pre-K in grade two classrooms. This was an incredible effort on our part and the part of all of our teachers and our cafeteria staff and our parent volunteers. And here you can see kids starting their planting in April and then harvesting in June and really enjoying the lettuce. And I have to tell you, we were so excited to get the grant a second year and to continue to share our resources. And we just had our second Salad Days this year. Twenty-seven classes participated from pre-K all the way through grade five. And these kids were so excited to try this lettuce. And it was remarkable to see kids try green things that have never tried it before to make salad dressing in their classrooms and to just get really excited to eat this healthy local food that they grew themselves.
We also very ambitiously attempt to plant a summer crop with each grade that will be harvestable in the fall. These include sunflowers, carrots, hopi purple bush beans, parsnips, beets, potatoes, and a full Three Sisters garden. And this summer, we'll also be growing herbs, cucumbers, tomatoes, squash, and beans for the food pantry. Each of the June plantings are things that take ninety to a hundred days to grow. So we're hoping that the rabbits leave them for the kids and that our community continues to support our garden by letting our garden grow.
And I couldn't be on this Spotlight on Excellence without talking about our head gardener, Randy Bradley Campbell, who is just, without him, we would have a bunch of sixteen empty beds in our school. We have this incredible resource in our garden and an invaluable resource in Randy. He volunteers many hours to the maintenance of our school garden, which is really truly like a small farm. And we were so grateful to learn that Brooklyn Public Schools will start to offer a stipend for one outdoor educator per school to help support this essential work. You know, without Randy's knowledge and his dedication, we wouldn't have been able to access this space and have it reach its full potential as we are this year. And I have to say, most Brookline Public Schools have an unsung hero like Randy, who really helped to keep the outdoor spaces thriving, who connect with staff, who connect with families. And he is, he's just amazing. So I had to give him a big shout out. And also, what makes our garden team really strong throughout our school is incredible PTO support and parent involvement. And of course, support from our administration to make the time and space for educators to get outside. Because it's, you know, it's, we want to make sure that this experience is equitable for all students in our school and in our district. And Randy helps to make that happen. And in order to support staff around using this space, particularly around Salad Days, we have implemented a couple of structures that we feel like are very helpful. So we will, the garden team creates really clear slides with really clear instructions for staff to use with their classrooms. We want to make this experience accessible for educators, so we don't want them to feel like they need to do a lot of heavy lifting. It can be a lot to take your class outside. So we want to make sure that the previewing is clear, that there's ample time to sign up for planting, and that we make sure we have a lot of parent volunteers, monthly team meetings to keep people in the know for what's expected. And we also have these physical kits that are pre-planned for each classroom. So each grade level has a physical kit that includes the seeds and the tools that they'll need. So that classroom teacher has everything here she needs when they take their classroom outside. And of course, we want to make sure we're able to communicate to the greater community. So Randy does an awesome job keeping up our Twitter account. And we've also created a virtual classroom that has every resource that we've worked on in an organized way for teachers to access.
And we also want to highlight why this work is important. It's important because it helps us focus on teaching stewardship for this small piece of our environment through shared experiences and outdoor education. Our guidance provides space for students to engage in authentic education, inquiry, and project-based learning. And it's our hope that students who participate in our gardening program, pre-K through 8, will cultivate a sense of empowerment to take leadership in combating the realities of climate change and racial justice that they face today and will continue to face in the future. Our extended hopes through all of our work, not only at FRR, but through our townwide grant, are trying to make Salad Days a continuing tradition at Ruffin Ridley, pre-K through 8, and continuing to support all of the other Brooklyn Public Schools in starting this tradition or something similar in their own spaces, helping to expand classroom composting and advocating for district-wide professional development around outdoor education and allowing us to continue our community ties with the food pantry and provide community service opportunities for our students because climate justice is social justice, and we really need to start yet.
Stop sharing. And thank you again for giving us the opportunity to talk about what's been going on in our school garden.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for sharing. And you know, I do want to echo Nicole's comments about just how lucky we are to have Randy as our garden educator in our community. Not only does he help with some of like the more traditional aspects of caring for our garden, but he's always there to provide educational tidbits, videos of our newborn rabbits that are being born in our garden beds and how to take care of them, and the bees, the mason bees that live in and around us. How to, he works a lot with our Parks and Recs department to try to make sure that our plants that are supposed to be growing don't get accidentally cut down by the landscapers. So he really goes above and beyond to make sure that it's a sustainable space and something that everybody can enjoy. So I do want to just thank you too, Randy, for all the work that you do.
Thank you. I embarrassingly accept your thanks.
So you gave us a nice little segue talking about how climate justice is social justice work. And that really ties into our other education educator leadership group, the Access and Equity Team. And so it's a very big team, and we have two people here tonight to talk a little bit about the work that these amazing educators do on behalf of all of our students and families. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Chan and Alicia Poole.
Thank you for having us. It's very exciting, as Nicole said, to share about the work that we're doing in our school. So we are the Access and Equity Team. So I'm going to go through some of the things that we do as a team. And then Sarah is going to talk a little bit about the journey we've been through over the years and how our goals have kind of shifted through the years. So one of the huge things that we take on every year is the Live at the Hive program. This is a two-week free summer program, and we also run during vacation weeks, like April and February school vacation. It's an enrichment program for FRR students with financial need. So our goals for this program is that students experience new places, and they get to try out some new experiences that they might not have outside of school. We practice routines, so especially those two weeks leading up to when we return to school, it's a good opportunity for students to practice some of these school skills, like listening, turn-taking, solving problems with peers. It's also a great opportunity for relationship building. It's nice when we have students who we've had in Live at the Hive in our own classrooms, or even just students that we can see around the school. They can see us as staff that they can come to, and they get to go know other peers on a different level as well. And we're also hoping to fill this gap of time that a lot of families have when district programming or even summer camp programming ends, and they have a little bit of a gap before the start of the school year. So hoping to provide some enrichment for students during that time. This year, we're doing six days in August, and it's a field trip-based program. So we're going to be around the Greater Boston area, such as Museo Science, the Kee Room, and the Aquarium. We run nine-to-two, so it's a full day of fun, and we provide snacks and lunch for the students as well. Another really exciting thing that we're working on is a social justice curriculum for our K-2 classes. Our vision for this is that all FRR students by the end of second grade have an early foundational understanding of identity, justice, diversity, and action. And then our goal for staff in our K-2 world is that those educators feel like they have the time, they have the tools, and they have the resources to curate that understanding in their students by the end of second grade. So you might be curious, why K-2? So many of the K-2 staff in our school have talked about a need for these types of lessons for a while. So our goal is to have this resource ready for this coming fall school year. We're hoping that by building this foundational understanding of key concepts in our K-2 world, that students will then be able to take that knowledge and vocabulary and be able to better access these concepts. and be able to better access these concepts when they get to middle school and upper elementary school. If it proves successful long-term, we'd love to build out something similar in the upper grades, particularly upper elementary school. So some of the details, we started this thinking and planning using Learning for Justice, which was formerly Teaching for Tolerance, their social justice standards. We're hoping to expand more voices outside our team as we continue to plan and launch in the fall. We recognize that as a team with a lot of white people on it, that we need some other voices and some other viewpoints to make sure that we are doing this in a way that is productive for our students, meets their needs. We've also met with district-wide leadership to get their feedback and to get their approval in the way we're going forward. Another thing that has been a big focus for us in the past and that we've started to dabble in a little bit again post COVID, our community nights at Egmont Trustment. So we go to the community rooms there. We have nights focused on camp registration information, winter reading and activity nights, math nights, accessing the parent portal, and then also distributing information that is helpful for families. This looks like activities for students, food, and then also some resources for families. So it can be an engaging, fun time to build community with the, the people who live over there. We also work on camp registration assistance. So this is a large focus for us towards the end of winter, going into springtime and helping families navigate how to register for district-wide programming. And then often they have a gap in the afternoon following that programming and making sure they're aware of assistance available for financial needs during that time. And then if they're not attending district-wide programming, connecting them to other camp options and making sure that they have financial assistance in that as well. We also partner with Brookline Thrives and we assist them in passing out their food bags, making sure that every family that is connected needs to be. And then making sure that those food bags get in the hands of students every Friday, which is great. We also partnership with the Equity Pack, which is a wonderful group that, as you know, leads the readers and leaders on Wednesday nights. So they attend our meetings and we intend theirs just to make sure that we're on the same page and we can figure out how to better support each other. So I'm going to hand it over to Sarah to talk a little bit about our journey.
Thank you. So we thought it'd be kind of apropos to end with a little bit of kind of the, the journey that we've gone through, both the highs and the lows. And everybody's had a really interesting last few years and our work in that has been interesting too. So Alicia and I came into this work along with many other educators in our school. We joined FRR community five years ago from other districts. And in those five years, we've seen what access and equity does change a lot. And part of that is in kind of response to current events, response to the needs of our school, response to the needs of the community, which as everyone in this meeting knows, have only grown in the last few years as we had kids kind of disconnected from school for a little bit, having to pull them back and families back and support them. So what we've done in the past is different from what we've done to say right now and, and what we hope to do. So we wanted to talk a little bit about our previous work and really how we think the district can support this work and how we can move forward as a team of teachers. So in the past, when we first came here, five years or so ago, we did a lot of work around planning and facilitating and co-facilitating professional development through faculty meetings, talking about racial justice and economic justice and leading that work kind of teacher to teacher in conversations. Through the last few years, we've also helped to support teachers and other community members by compiling read-aloud lists, resources, resources and response to current events and resources to be proactive. So you're not just responding to current events, particularly through the pandemic when there was a lot of racial turbulence and injustice and violence. We worked a lot about how to talk to kids about that, how to work through that as a teacher and how to work through that in your family. We've also kind of moved last year into helping middle school out with some of those difficult discussions. And many years ago now, it feels like Jen, we were also a part of the beginning of the name change process, which has been such a foundational journey for our school to go through in its justice work. So we'll kind of end with challenges and hopes. So we recognize that our team is really an individual school's response to what we know are systemic issues. And so our capacity to address these things is limited to our, our roles in school and our kind of, our time. So just go back for a second, Alicia, sorry, my 5:00 PM brain is not as good as early in the morning one. But we've had some difficulty maintaining team membership. We've have a lot of kind of attrition and change over the years, new people every year, which is great, but it's difficult to build momentum. And we know that so much of that is due to just the capacity of teachers to work beyond their already difficult workload right now. We know this work is foundational. We know that everyone wants to be doing it. And when we're kind of stretched to sort of meet the logistics systemic gaps that occur around camp, that occur around afternoon programming, that occur around access to school and community events. That makes it difficult for people to kind of stay on and stay through the work. And we are really hopeful that in the coming years, we can boost teachers up to be able to both, to bring that work foundationally into their classroom and to be able to participate in a more fulfilling and realistic way with the breadth of our jobs right now. Now we can kind of go on to the hopes, but we want to kind of acknowledge and say that we've been really hopeful specifically this year. We're really encouraged by lots of our new leadership and the district's growth in this last year, particularly with recognizing our response to these major systemic challenges. And so we're really hopeful that as a district, as a school, as a town, we can work together in a much larger capacity and on a larger scale to meet many of these issues that are, that are top-down, but are now being met bottom-up classroom to family and figuring it out in that lens. So our hope for the future is really threefold. And I'm going to kind of go backwards, which is tricky, but again, five o'clock brain. I think for us, we really think that building out a meaningful, authentic, justice-based curriculum, K and up, is foundational to our work. If we're going to be an anti-bias, anti-racist district, we need to be owning that work in every classroom. So we want to integrate it into everyone's experience here. And we want to make sure that that work is reflected in student goals and even in progress reports. If we're labeling this as a priority, it needs to be in all parts of our work. And in order to do that, we're hopeful that district and townwide, we can work together to try to take off some of the logistical loads that some teachers and this team and similar teams in other schools are handling right now, which include potentially creating some sort of family liaison or support position at larger or higher need schools such as ours and Lincoln as well, to help really families navigate those resources, navigate the difficulties of camp registration when you need financial need, navigating after school, navigating transportation to all these programs. Those are a huge lift for families and they're a huge lift for teachers. And last, we really are hopeful that with all the wonderful programming that Brookline does offer, that foundationally, we can always be looking at how are we making sure this is accessible to every family based on your finances, based on your transportation needs and based on your ability. So we want to make sure that we are looking at that first before we kind of open up these programs to, to everyone, that we want to make sure they're fair. And so that means increased clarity, guidance, and financial support for all families who need it to access district townwide programming, summer vacation programming, camps and all the things that make our community so strong for so many kids. So we end with just this idea that we, we really are hopeful for the vision of Brookline, for the vision of our school and for the vision of this team. And we look forward to talking with you all more about how we can make that happen. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Sarah and Alicia. Thanks again to the school committee and Dr. Guillory for having us tonight. I hope I gave you a little, I hope we gave you some insight into just the massive amounts of work that our educators do on behalf of their students, day in and day out, outside of just teaching in their classroom. It's quite incredible what's happening at Florida Rough and Ridley School between these two groups and the Rough and Ridley readers and leaders and countless other things that are happening inside of our school. And so I feel really honored and thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to highlight just a couple of pieces of all the good that's happening in our school community.
Thank you for joining us. It's much appreciated. And that was a very informative presentation, very impressive work that's taking place. I'd like to open it up to questions and comments. Suzanne, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, David. I had two quick questions or comments. One is just a shout out to Randy. One of the biggest challenges we had when I was at a school was who does it in the summer? So you know, we plant these beautiful gardens and then they would just, they'd come back in the fall and they'd all be dead because you, you have to care for it. So thank you so much to your garden team for planning on that and figuring that out. I think that's great. And then my other comment, those two, the, the summer program, the summer camp in August that you have, and I'm just wondering how you fund that? I'm not sure. I, I might've missed it. Did you say?
It's through a combination of different grants that are community-based. So it's not through the operating budget.
Right. No, I gather that. Do you know how many students you might serve, like last year, this year, maybe coming up?
We generally serve fifteen. This year, we're making it a goal of twenty.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sounds like a wonderful program for the kids. Thank you.
Nancy?
I just wanted to say that I, this is a superhuman Herculean effort. I'm so, so amazed by what you've accomplished from top to bottom. So well done. I'm so proud of all of you. And if there's anything I can do to help you, I would love to. So reach out to me. I think what you're doing is amazing. As someone who's the Grim Reaper of all things green, I am so impressed by you. That was amazing. Congratulations. And it's wonderful, wonderful, really wonderful. Congratulations. And thank you. Most importantly, thank you.
Anyone else? So comments on any part of superintendent's report and spotlight of excellence? All right, go ahead, Dr. Guillory.
So at this time, I have both certificates for both teams. So I'll just read them both. The public schools of Brookline Spotlight on Excellence is awarded to the Florida Rough and Ridley Garden Team with our appreciation and gratitude for your work leading FRR's garden team, promoting sustainability practices at the school, hosting FRR salad days and sharing your enthusiasm for growing and harvesting locally grown food with the entire school community. So that's the garden team certificate. And then we have the access and equity team in recognition of your commitment to creating a just and inclusive school community and with gratitude for your comprehensive efforts to ensure that all Florita Rough and student, Florita Rough and Ridley students have equitable access to school and community opportunities and resources. So congratulations to both teams for your work.
I just say, Jen, could you just say, say to the public why we have all those bees and hives? Case they don't know.
Yes, our school mascot is a bee. And so we lovingly refer to ourselves as the hive. It helps bring us together as a community and it is kind of the theme that is everywhere around our school. And rightfully, so now we have some beautiful bees that visit all the pollinator, the pollinator gardens and flowers and things that we have. And Randy and I were just talking about like, what would it take to have a honey hive in our community? So more to come about bees.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I want to thank everyone who joined us today from the Ridley School for Spotlight on Excellence. Very impressive work. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting if you so choose. But if you want to move on with your evening, we'll understand. And that will bring us to public comments. Our first speaker for public comments is Talia Sharot. And you'll, each speaker will have two minutes. And you have the option to turn on your camera if you so choose. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. So the purpose of my comment is to suggest that we provide parents an option not to officially withdraw their kids from school if they are leaving for a preset amount of time, which is equal or less than a semester. And this is to avoid the considerable red tape that is currently required upon return and the delay to the children's education due to said red tape. So the current situation is as follows. If a family is leaving Brookline for a few months, the parent needs to complete a withdrawal form. Then shortly before the return date, they need to complete all the forms to enroll the children as if it was the first time their children were to join the Brooklyn Public School. And this includes uploading again, all the forms about previous schools, et cetera. So this is hours of work for each children, despite the fact that all the information is already in the system. So the parent needs to start as if it's a blank slate. Then an online meeting is set up with a Brooklyn Public School administrator. Then the administrator initiates the next steps, but only once a family has physically returned to Brookline. So the children will have to sit at home for a few days and the parents not be able to work during this time. Next, the parents are sent more forms to complete from the school. Again, these are the exact same forms they originally completed when they originally enrolled. So hours of extra works to provide information that's already in the school system anyway. Then a meeting is set up with the school, then finally the children can re-enter their class. So basically this is unnecessary, huge burden on the parents, but also on the administrators and city employees and the taxpayer. So my proposed solution is that you do not require the parents to go through the same procedure as you require new parents, but rather save all the information on the system, have an agreed date for the children to come back to school, at which time you simply reactivate them. And I understand you might need proof of residence again, to make sure nothing has changed. So you can ask specifically for that. And I think this relatively simple change will make a much more efficient system and also signal to the parents and to the administrators a kind of sign of respect and just make everything more efficient. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Alyssa Connor, who will be followed by Jennifer Casas. Ms. Connor, whenever you're ready.
Hello. BHS teacher for over two decades, class of nineteen ninety, parent of a rising ninth grader. And I live in Brookline. I'm a former materials fee parent and that's what I'm speaking about. You have heard and will heard here a lot of testimony about the return on investment that Brookline gains from this program. And here's the main takeaway that I want you to hear. We are telling you how hard we work for Brookline students and how hard we want to work for your children. The dirty, not so secret in our profession is how much unpaid time teachers, perhaps especially Brookline teachers, have been willing to put in for the sake of our students and the love of this work. But relying on our unpaid labor out of the goodness of our hearts is neither fair nor recipe for sustaining a great school systems. So we have to invest as communities in educators in order for educators to do their jobs well. And the materials fee program is that investment in teachers. It communicates that the energy we pour into our students is valued. And so any move to destabilize or dismantle the materials fee program, even temporarily, even just for a few, it amounts to a disinvestment in teachers and that has consequences. Whatever fiscal challenges Brookline may be facing, and I know we are, it is a choice to disinvest in teachers in this way. And that contributes to demoralization and the despair that's already made it really hard for lots of teachers to show up in our, for our students in the way that they need us and the way that we want to. And it's a choice that has consequences for the quality of education Brookline can provide its children. Educators recently stood up to demand that the district do a better job of respecting and investing in the professionals who serve our children. The union, the school committee came to historic agreement. I'm thrilled to be putting my energy back into the classroom and not into fighting to be heard at the bargaining table. And here we are again, asking, begging, demanding to be heard about what we need to do the kind of work that community says it values from us. What we need is a consistent and reliable commitment to the materials fee program so that teachers can make that consistent, reliable commitment that the community asks of us. So because of my particular financial situation, I've been able to move back to Brookline. Most of my colleagues can't. So now I'm speaking as a parent, a voter, and a taxpayer. I want us to invest in our educators. So instead of feeling demoralized, devalued, and burnt out, they can sustainably offer their best selves and their best work to our children. August is too late. Offer spaces now to the educators who have been left high and dry for next year. Not particular schools, but a space. It can be done. Call for an override, raise my taxes, keep these amazing teachers here so that my child and our children can get the education they deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Next up is Jennifer Casas, whenever you're ready. And Ms. Casas will be followed by Juan Juan. And Ms. Casas will be followed by Wan Wang. Is Ms. Casas with us? If Ms. Casas is not yet ready, maybe we can go back to her. Uh, Robin, could you promote Wan Wang? All right. We don't have Wan Wang either. Nicole Chasse. I'm not sure if Robin is still with us. Is there someone else? Oh, here we go. Jennifer Casas. Here we go.
Yeah, sorry. I couldn't hear. Um, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to be sure because, uh, sorry, brief because they, they already talked about this, but I'm, uh, talking again on support of the program. You know, I'm a parent. I'm not a teacher. I fully support it. I believe it is actually outside what was already said, an incredible tool to attract and retain high-quality teachers and more diverse teachers, which frankly, we can use in our community. Um, you know, I have heard the same, uh, idea that it possibly is going to be modified or potentially removed. And I feel limiting this program or removing it impacts the morale of our teachers and fulfilling one of the things that we agree as a community to do, which is again, retain, uh, diverse and high-quality teachers. It seems, uh, that the number of applicant teachers have been reduced significantly. It's much smaller than years past, and I think that might be a reflection of this. Offering this in August, as it was said before, I think it's too late for it. Um, and if we want to, you know, I know also know other towns offer this benefit and I feel like if we want to be competitive, if we want to, you know, have a community with again, that diverse set of teachers that really want to be here and be here for our kids is an extremely important benefit that shouldn't be taken away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Casas. Up next is Wan Wang, followed by Nicole Chasse.
Hello.
Hello, go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Wan Wang. This is my tenth year working at Brooklyn Public Schools. I have taught Chinese to grade K two five at Drisco and a middle school six to eight at Pierce this year. I'm a member of B, the Brooklyn Educator of Color Team. I'm also the board member of MAFLA, Massachusetts Foreign Language Teacher Association. I, along with Erica O'Mahony, are the new liaisons on material fees program this year. I live in West Roxbury. And I have two boys, a six-year-old who goes to Runko kindergarten this year, thanks to the material fee program and a four-year-old. I'm also the room parents of my son's kindergarten class. Everyone said this year has been the hardest teaching year and I cannot agree more. But when Roger and Akira, who have serving the materials fee program for the past decades, asked if anyone want to take over this job this year, I reply yes in a heartbeat. I knew it is a completely voluntary job. We don't get paid. I knew it will take hours and hours of my spare time, weekday and weekend, researching, writing emails, connecting colleagues and holding meetings. But I also knew I wanted this job because every day when my six-year-old come home and cannot stop talking about how happy he was at school with his teachers, his friends at Runko and his little brother always interrupts and asks when he can come here. I know that I want to work on the material fee program with Superintendent Dr. Guillory and the school committee. So teachers like me can send our children here where we work so they can receive one of the best quality education. Since Erica and I took over the role of liaisons, we collected one ninety-five personal emails, including staff who have kids currently in the PSB system, have had in the past or will bring their kids here in future. Among one ninety-five staff, thirty-six of us from nine PSB schools and the B program, teachers and parents already wrote their stories about their experience, gratitude, perspective and concerns about this program. Some of them have presented last week and you will hear more tonight. The full list of everyone's story has been shared with Dr. Guillory last week before school committee meeting and will be shared with all the school committee later this week, too. Behind every number and story, you can see us, one ninety-five staff. So, uh, through material fee program, invest heavily in our jobs to devote many, many hours to become a better teacher, build relationships and deepen connection to the entire Brooklyn community. All of which are unquantifiable things that make this school system outstanding. A place where teachers are willing to travel near and afar to bring their own kids. While we are very, very grateful that Superintendent and a school committee generally support this program, eighteen students have now been accepted this year. And, uh, Dr. Guillory has hinted next year, kindergarten placements might also be affected by budgetary restriction. We are not worried about staff who already have children here now. But future material fee program students and the program itself is under threat. So why, why we wait for August thirteenth to give these teachers an answer about where to place eighteen's kids of their own across nine schools? Quoted from one of the stories shared by a colleague. As people talk about teacher shortage and records levels of teacher burned up this year, securing positions in the material fee program for staff children in all grade levels could be your best recruitment and retention tool. I have seen many teachers leave PSB because it was too anxiety provoking to wait for a last minute spot and they have to face moving. Please invest in their children and you will secure at least a thirteen years commitment from us. Don't wait until August, even if you don't know which school this children will be placing until the end of summer. Please assure these teachers now that their children will have a spot. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I see Mariah has her hand raised. Go ahead, Mariah.
Thanks, David. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just want to make sure that our speakers all heard what Dr. Guillory said at the beginning, which is that there's no change in practice from previous years um, about materials fee. Um, I certainly want to hear from staff, but I also want to make sure that staff are understanding that the concern has been raised and that there has already been a response. So I'm hoping that we can get specific comments, not about, you know, if they're going to be talking about the program that they're focusing on, specific things that have already been debunked, so to speak. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up we have Nicole Chasse, who will then be followed by Marika Alibi.
Hello. Thank you. Um, and thank you, Mariah, for, um, what you just mentioned about the clarification. I will be brief because I'm echoing a lot of the, the comments that my colleagues have also shared, but you know, I felt like I spoke a few minutes ago in my role as a teacher at the Spotlight on Excellence. And now I join you as a parents of two, a parent of two materials fee children. Um, I've been teaching in Brookline in some capacity for nineteen years. And as I grew as a teacher and before I had children, I was so in awe of the caliber of the teaching and learning in BPS. And when I learned that, uh, Brooklyn Public Schools teachers could access the materials fee program for their own children, I felt so fortunate that the town I worked in made a commitment and wise investment in its teaching staff by offering this program. And my two daughters are now materials fee students at the Baker School, they're fifth grader and second grader. And seeing how my kids have evolved as students in Brookline has only deepened my appreciation for Brookline schools. Um, our lives completely revolve around the materials fee program. We're Boston residents. Um, because my children can go to Baker and Baker School extended day, I can work longer with less distraction because they're now part of the school system I love and really completely dedicate my life to. I can channel my energy into being the best educator I can for my young students. And also dedicate my time and energy to other score programs, core programs such as Girls of the Run and our school yard garden. So it's a win-win for the town and my school and my family. And I have a deeper connection with their friends, families and can lend my unique voice to issues and questions that come up. And without a doubt, I am a stronger educator because of my daughter's teachers. As they've grown and moved through the grades, I've either collaborated directly with their classroom teachers or gained wisdom, tools and strategies that have enriched my own practice. And while I understand that both Superintendent Guillory and the school committee support this program, and the families that are currently within it and see the value it provides. But it was so disheartening to learn that the future of the program for incoming families and educators may be in jeopardy. And I'm just here tonight to really urge our leadership to prioritize and protect this program, make it accessible to current and future Brooklyn Public School teachers. Because when you invest in your teachers and your families, your return becomes exponentially greater. And the materials fee program benefits all the schools in Brookline, not only because it will attract committed, diverse, high-quality educators, but because it will help keep and sustain educators that are uniquely committed to the values of Brooklyn Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Marika Alibi. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Please feel free to correct me. Uh, followed by Sophie Gorlin.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Marika Alibi. You did pretty well. It was pretty close. Um, my pronouns are she/her/hers and I teach math, um, at the high school. My comment tonight is in support of the materials fee program. Um, I started my teaching career at BHS in September two thousand and five, roughly seventeen years ago, when I was just twenty-four. In case you're doing a little quick mental math, yes, I'm currently forty-one. Um, less than a month ago, I invited my seniors to come back and visit me in the future, telling them I'll be here for at least another thirteen years because my youngest is starting kindergarten in the fall. So if you've pieced all that together, it's quite possible that I'll spend my entire teaching career here celebrating milestones like twenty-five years and thirty years teaching in the public schools of Brookline. Um, I've decided not to use this time to tell stories of my first seventeen years because I've already written that. And as Juan mentioned, that'll be shared with you, if not already. Um, instead, I'd like to share my hopes for the next seventeen years. Um, members of the school committee, the vast majority of you have joined the school committee in the last five years. Superintendent Guillory and the senior leadership team, almost all of you are completing your first year in your current role in Brookline. I believe that you all felt compelled to enter a very challenging role in a very difficult time, in a very complex district because you want and think you can and help improve Brookline's public schools. We've had a rough couple of years. We've seen a lot of turnover in leadership and experienced a lot of instability. However, I hope when we're celebrating my thirtieth year and on stage together at my youngest child's graduation, that we look back at this time during your tenure and say, that's when it changed. That's when it got better. I hope as you continue in your current roles in the public schools of Brookline, that you work to build community and strengthen the relationships between families, school staff, central administration and the school committee. Supporting the materials fee program is part of making that happen. And I don't just mean supporting it in theory, but believing in its ability to recruit and retain high-quality teachers, so much so that you remove the space available basis condition. I hope that in the future, when a talented, hardworking and committed Brooklyn educator applies to have their children enrolled in the public schools of Brookline, that the public schools of Brookline in return welcomes them with open arms and says, yes, come, we'll make it work. Your family is an important part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sophie Gorlin, followed by Christina Toby.
Okay. Hi, um, I'm, uh, my name is Sophie Gorlin. I'm an English teacher at the high school, uh, and also a BHS grad. I went through the system K to twelve. Um, this is my daughter Winnie, who will be starting at Baker next year through the materials fee program, along with, um, Marika's, uh, child. Um, as I won't say the whole statement I've prepared if, um, I'm not up to date with, with sort of the latest news, but I just want to echo Marika's point about the space available clause. And, um, you know, while I appreciate your support of the program, it seems like support without a firm commitment doesn't really amount to support. Sorry, it's my son, who I'm hoping will be in the program, um, at Baker also following Winnie. But, um, it seems like, uh, support without a firm commitment to welcome everyone doesn't feel like true support. Because as a previous speaker said, people plan their lives around this program. They choose where they're going to live, where they're going to buy a house. Their spouses' jobs are dependent on that in the commute. And it feels unfair at the last minute for people to have to scramble or worry about their kids not being able to be admitted to the system. So I would ask that there's a firmer commitment and more respectful communication to the people on the receiving end of these policies because our lives really revolve around this program. And, you know, I feel deeply committed to Brookline schools as someone who went through the system and came back. But if, if there's uncertainty about, um, my son's ability to enroll in the program in future years, I would have to leave Brookline schools and find a job elsewhere, which would be devastating to me. But I, I need a firm commitment that there will be space for, for Winnie's siblings in the program as well. So I can continue to be committed to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Christina Toby.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can. Go right ahead.
Great. Thank you. Um, sorry. So, um, thank you. My name is Christina Toby and I have been a teacher for twenty-one years. I've taught Spanish at Brooklyn High School for the past eighteen years. Uh, I have a seventh grader, a third grader and a second grader, and they're all materials fee students enrolled at Pierce. So I'm speaking, um, about that program. This program has meant so much to me and my family over the years. Because of the materials fee program, our entire family is now truly integrated into the Brookline community. I've taught siblings of my children's classmates and will soon be directly teaching friends of my own children. I can't overstate the value of the very strong connections I've developed with many Brooklyn families. In the sidelines of soccer games, I'm happy to discuss the new buildings, ninth grade class placement, sports and options for electives. I often speak about important conversations we have in our own classrooms about identity and race, the international trips and the deep relationships teachers value and build with students at BHS. I love teaching here and I love that my children are able to experience Brookline schools. I also have strong relationships with many of the teachers and staff at Pierce. This year, a colleague and I were looking for an authentic way for three of our freshman Spanish classes to share storybooks our students had written. It was so easy to reach out to my children's teachers to arrange a field trip. As a result, we were able to visit three second and third grade classes. It was a beautiful experience watching the high schoolers read their original work in Spanish to the younger students. As both an ambassador of the high school and a parent with children in the community, I was able to create a mutually beneficial project. These are the types of projects and connections that make this community and school system different from others in the area. Had I not had the personal connection with peer staff, I'm not sure I would have taken this on during such a challenging school year. Now we plan to make it a yearly trip. Um, I'm going to skip a little because of what, um, was mentioned earlier and get to my, um, closing. Dr. Guillory and school committee members, I appreciate that you've expressed a commitment to this program. My understanding is that there are families looking for eighteen placements across nine schools in grades one through ten. I certainly don't pretend to understand the full scope of budgetary planning and scheduling. That said, to me, this seems like a very small ask for the return it would give to the community in terms of staff recruitment and retention at a time when teachers are leaving the profession at an all-time high. When we have said again and again that we value the recruitment and retention of more teachers of color, this is a concrete action the district can take. There must be a way to guarantee slots to these families within, within the coming month. When I applied for the program for my now thirteen-year-old, I remember the stress we felt if we waited here until June, if she had a spot. Please consider the strain this puts on families. Please show us the commitment you have to this program by finding a way to guarantee placement for these families now and for all future families seeking placement through the materials fee program. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Macy O'Leary.
Hello. I'm Macy. Oh, sorry. I'm Macy O'Leary, and I have been a paraprofessional for PSB for almost nine years. This year, I also became a member of the BEED team. My son, a BHS junior, was accepted into the Materials Fee Program in fifth grade. My two daughters were not. I applied for another three years to get them into the program to no avail. But then they were settled elsewhere, and I stopped trying. Now my youngest is entering high school, and Brookline is the best fit for her. Judging from the amount of Materials Fee seats my colleagues have gotten in recent years, I did not expect to be denied a spot. Being part of the Brookline community has been rewarding for my family. The last school committee meeting highlighted the Brookline Cares Club at BHS. They are conducting a drive to provide socks to people in need. My son is a member of that club. My husband is an inspector for the city of Boston and has a residency requirement that won't lift for another five years. Otherwise, we would have moved to Brookline years ago. This is a recruitment and retention issue. There has been a net loss of six hundred thousand educators in the U.S. since January 2020, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. And in a recent survey by the NEA, fifty-five percent of teachers said they are planning to leave the field. Further, nearly half of early-career teachers leave the profession due to overwhelm and lack of support, which adds to the current shortage of teachers in the U.S. The annual replacement cost of these teachers is $2 billion. Variably, teachers carry stress, which leads to burnout. Putting in extra hours daily is the norm, creating an unbalanced life. This may not be true for every teacher at PSB, but there is absolutely a culture of going above and beyond here. Brookline is special. I have been enthusiastically highlighting this to potential teachers through my BEED work when they ask why being paid less at PSB is worth it compared to other districts. Research shows that benefits repeatedly outweigh salary when it comes to employee motivation. Regarding Materials Fee acceptance, I recently heard, and I quote, "Children with special needs have the least chance of being accepted because the district is resistant to paying for the cost." This was upsetting to hear, as my daughter is dyslexic. My son is on an IEP, which was disclosed before he was accepted years ago. Is denying these children legal? I don't know. I do know that it is unethical and certainly not equitable. Something important to Brookline, as their website reads. "I was not able to speak at last week's meeting as my two daughters were graduating from different schools in different towns on the same day. My husband and I split our time and missed parts of both graduations. It was quite anxiety-provoking. To orchestrate these obstacles, I took a personal day. The following day, I was out again due to a migraine. I'm not telling you this story to exemplify martyrdom. Rather, I am offering you perspective regarding the stress that teachers carry when their children go to school in districts other than the one they work in. Not getting a Materials Fee seat for their children will impact teacher and para-effectiveness geographically and psychologically. Understandably, Materials Fee students can also increase their workload. I believe the benefits outweigh this. Employees will stay while their children attend PSB, largely reducing turnover expenses. I have worked hard at PSB for nine years and with pride. I believe in Brookline and have always felt grateful that my son is a Materials Fee student. I am disappointed that Brookline is again splitting up my family. I enjoy my job as a para and especially love my work with BEED. Not getting a seat for my daughter when her brother has been a PSB student for seven years makes no sense to me. Why does the application ask for sibling information if it does not affect acceptance? I am now among many scrambling for a new plan next year. Respectfully, if this was the plan all along, telling us in January would have been virtuous, as the deadline for alternative schools is early spring. Thank you."
All right. Thank you. And that concludes public comments for this evening. Next up, we have presentations and discussions of current issues. Update on K-8 World Language with our K-8 World Language Coordinator, Tanya Alvarado. Ms. Alvarado. Go right ahead.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right. So I would like to start tonight by talking a little bit about, one of our goals for us was to really identify where we want to be, the actions that will get us there, and the program outcomes for our students. So we arrived at our first-ever K-12 vision, mission, and goals by having several collaborative sessions. We had two K-8 teachers and two BHS teachers alongside Rachel Eo, the nine-twelve coordinator, and me represented four of our program languages. We then drafted these up and invited input first from our K-12 world language colleagues and then also from our stakeholders, and we incorporated that feedback in our final version. So in our vision, students are inspired to better understand themselves, each other, and the world. And as a result of learning a world language and its cultures, they become more engaged local and global citizens. Our mission then is to support students in that process by providing units and experiences that are communication-centered and contribute to cultural understanding while ensuring an environment that's going to be really conducive to having students engage in that work.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is Andy. The slides are so miniaturized that I'm not really able to read them.
Is that better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know. So, language development is a continual process. And in that process, we want to hone in on language development. Students will understand and then produce spoken and written language in order to interact with others. Over time, that language will increase in complexity, and students will be able to interact in a wider range of situations. We also hone in on perspective-taking. Cultural competency is critical to linguistic proficiency as well as to understanding oneself and others. So students are exploring and celebrating perspectives and practices of multiple cultures, including their own. We also hone in on community engagement. Students will be prepared to serve and lead in their local communities and empowered to promote equity and cross-cultural understanding. Initially, world language programming in Brookline started in the seventh grade, which is closest to the third row down. Currently, we're at the fifth bar down, and you can see how the addition of the K-six program has let students reach higher levels of proficiency going into grade twelve. We do, of course, have students switching languages, but within the context of the same language. But if we had more time, we could get even more students there, and we could go further. So some of the constraints that we have are that sixth grade is only three times a week. We have a K-five program that is very spread out, and we should have more. We know how fundamental those early language learning years are to fostering intercultural understanding and language development. And really, that's for any language in grade six, whether it's the same language or a new language. And we also know K-two is not yet ninety minutes, and it really should be ninety minutes weekly or more to meet the time allocation of an early language program. I won't go into each point here, but in the past, world language classrooms did not have much of an expectation of language use. So students learned a lot about the language, did a lot of rote practice, but not much communication. Culture was a side note in a very teacher-centered environment in which all students received the same lesson. Today's classroom is about teaching languages so that students can actually use them to communicate. We've moved to a proficiency-based approach that's using the target language ninety percent or more, putting culture in the foreground, making classes student-centered, and respecting diverse learning styles and needs. The reason communication-centered classrooms are so important is because we acquire language through input and sustained communicative attempts. We learned our first language at our own rate and pace based on the quality and the quantity of language used in our homes and around us, as well as our own individual cognitive development. And that's very similar to the world language learning. So if you have abundant CI, that is comprehensible input, input that you understand when you hear it or see it, and use of the language that's meaningful and communicative, you have that language acquisition and growth over time. These are our state frameworks with two new practices in the 2021 revision at the bottom, social and emotional well-being and social justice. Those actually don't translate into standards, but they're embedded throughout the process of gaining linguistic and cultural proficiency. And students are engaging in all of these practices from the start. These three domains also correlate to our three goal areas as well. For today's presentation, I'll focus on interpersonal communication from that first domainer goal because most students and families are hoping that students are learning the language in order to use it. So interpersonal communication is all about spontaneous communication, to share ideas, feelings, perspectives. So in our Chinese, French, and Spanish classes, learners start at the novice level. Those are oftentimes called the word-level stages. Into later on, the intermediate stages where they begin stretching into sentences and strings of sentences as they go further down the path into their high school years. One thing to keep in mind, though, is that this is not grade-level specific. So when sixth graders choose a new language for middle school or the students switch to a new language in grade nine, they go back to the beginning as novices. This chart shows the general language functions so that you can kind of compare what different levels are able to do in terms of expressing preferences. For example, the fourth one down, a novice might say, "I like to run," or "I don't like to run." Whereas an intermediate could really get into that more, say why they like it or why they don't like it, give some detail around, you know, where they do those things, what time of the year, what places. So you could take any topic, really, and based on previously acquired skills and what the students' goals are, you would get different production. So I'm going to show you an example of this. I used ice cream as the example. So what might learners at different stages say or write on this topic? But I just want to let you know before I show the examples is that I used examples in English, since that's the language we're all sharing right now. But you can imagine this in French or Chinese. So you will see non-native spelling or phrasing that you would see in writing and in speech. So kindergartners begin at the novice-low level and are reaching for novice-mid performance by the end of the second grade. The next stage is novice-high, where we want students to be at the end of grade five. And it's really important to keep in mind that while we're looking at a window of six years here, this is really fantastic progress, considering that we are not having instruction every day until grade seven. And some grade levels get as little as sixty minutes of instruction a week. Also, that the world language classroom for the vast majority of students is representing the sole source of exposure to the language. Looks like my slides have skipped a little bit, so I'm just gonna... Oops, sorry about this. Okay, I've missed a slide here somehow, but continuing on through the examples, into the middle school, into the middle school years, that's where we're looking for sentence-level speech. So you would see language grow in complexity, but you would still see a lot of those non-native likenesses because at that stage, they are actually creating with language rather than kind of relying on memorized phrases as a novice might. So just to dig into these levels a little bit, we have novices understanding simple questions and phrases using common words, simple phrases. But I want to bring us back to our practices as well. So our K-two units have can-do statements that are focused on, among many things, intercultural competence. So are SEL-focused or have a social justice lens. We also use the framework Learning for Justice, so they're getting a second shout-out tonight. But early language learners are quite profound and inspiring in the ways that they can engage in these topics from the start so that they really grow that ability to respond to diversity with empathy and respect. After that, novices are understanding main ideas. They're using common repetitive words and phrases, short, simple sentences, and they're beginning to combine words and phrases. Again, they are participating in all of the practices. And so in the context of the linguistic and cultural comparisons in green in the center, they might in fifth grade, while working on telling time. So within that context where they are, you know, using their acquired knowledge about numbers, they may also learn that countries around the world describe time in different ways and that all of them are really the right way. And so they grow that ability to understand and appreciate interacting with people from cultures or belief systems that are different from one's own. Oh, here are my intermediate-low and mid. So those were the examples from earlier. Again, those are intentional typos, but in addition to French and Chinese, we also have French in middle school. Sorry, Spanish-Chinese-French. So students are here. They've had nine academic years of instruction. And I think despite what, you know, you may have expected something perhaps more sophisticated after nine years, like this is really fantastic work. And our teachers and our students are doing a really great job within the constraints that we have. But so one highlight is when we last ran our data cycle on our, using our external assessment on our eighth graders, which targets those conversational skills. Our eighth graders were performing better than the national average across all of the languages. And so I go back to thinking, how much further could we go if we really had the time that we needed? Intermediates are now understanding details. They are using words and expressions on a wider range of topics, elaborating, combining simple sentences, and stringing together sentences. In terms of the practices in blue, as novice French students are learning about clothing, they may also think about where those clothes come from and the workers making that clothes and the clothing's impact on the environment. For the highlight slides, I have to acknowledge that none of these could be attained without the work of the world language teachers. They are one hundred percent behind all of the fantastic ideas and work that goes into improving our curriculum and our programming. So without them, there are no highlights. At the K two level, we had very ambitious essential questions and enduring understandings in our curriculum in the past. And what we did was make them more relevant to students' lives and attainable based on the developmental levels of the students. And they also helped give teachers a better idea of what they were planning for through these revised objectives. Successful language learners is the prequel to a unit that we have in middle school. That helps learners understand performance levels and how to move forward on that path to proficiency. Having an understanding of the strategies and supports that they have in order to do that. So we really saw a need to bring that down further. So that students were engaging in that kind of self-awareness, self-reflection, goal setting and growth mindset at an earlier age. So we also, oh, I missed the fall monarch, sorry about that. So the fall monarch migration, we also piloted this year, which we're thinking we might actually move some elements of it to the spring because there's lots happening in world language in the fall. But in that unit, students are comparing Massachusetts with Michoacan. And tracking the route of the butterflies as they fly south and then return. And we had some classes try out journey north symbolic butterfly migration where they exchanged letters with a class in Mexico. So that was really exciting. We began our standards based grading pilot several years ago with four teachers and have now grown that. So in lieu of letter grades, the feedback that students are getting is about their performance. Where they are on the proficiency scale and their communication. We've also really focused on providing more comprehensible input with the addition of language learner magazines and resources such as film chats or picture talks. So in the past, you might have seen a video clip in class and you may have had some previewing, but generally more conceptual. So for example, you're going to watch a movie about sports. Can you, what sports have you played recently? But with these strategies for film, teachers are using pictures from the video as visual scaffolds. Supported by level appropriate teacher talk and interaction to really prepare students prior to watching and throughout the process. And then so that they can synthesize, discuss and relate what they have seen to their contexts. And Spanish and French across K eight use gendered pronouns. So we know that we need to include non-binary pronouns to ensure that we're creating a safe and inclusive space for all of our students. Across our K eight program and it feels really good at this point to be able to make that commitment. I'll shout out again, our collaborative visioning process, which will assist us as in the articulation of our K twelve program. In those examples, we were also really highlighting equity. World language is all about providing access. Really doing the differentiation that's needed to help all students be successful and get the resources they need. World language disrupts practices and perspectives that disproportionately affect marginalized groups. So we are assets focused, we want to recognize and acknowledge efforts and growth. And this is one of the main reasons we placed standards based grading in middle school as a system that supports equity. World language centers the voices and perspectives of marginalized groups within the countries where the languages are spoken. It leverages the backgrounds and experiences of students and their connection to those groups. In terms of our next steps, we will we will be updating our grades three to five units. Similarly to the way we did with our K two revisions, we were really looking to start that work right as the pandemic hit, so we're looking to get back to that. And we also know that we want to continue to build grade level specific units in grades three to five, similar to the ones that we that you that I spoke of just a minute ago. In our six eight program, we want to identify titles for reading libraries. To help with acquisition and you know, it's a time consuming process. Because we really want to carefully review each title and make sure that materials are not inadvertently contributing to stereotypes. And that cultures and people are represented in a positive light. We also want to continue developing and norming common assessments. Which is very tricky without the last point that I'll share, which is to start developing K eight general scope and sequences with teachers to help them collaborate. I mean, this is really about, you know, giving teachers what they need to be successful and with all of the many grade levels that they have. Collaboration becomes tricky because if you're introducing a unit at a different time, then that means that you may not have a thought partner or someone with whom you can discuss what worked and what didn't. So in that process of developing these, you know, we'll expand those opportunities and we are looking to create equity of content across schools as part of that process. And that is all that I have for now and I will happily take any comments or questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It was extremely informative. Who would like to go first with questions or comments? Okay, Andy?
Yeah, thanks very much, Tanya. Could you say then more about the sixth grade feedback that you're planning to do in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year? Just, you know, what kind of assessments are you planning to do?
Sure, so. Yeah, so we provide feedback in terms of the report card. It is about interpersonal communication. So that is the focus of our program and so that is right now, as we're limited to one character spot in the report card. But essentially what we are doing is, you know, making sure that we have lots of practice opportunities for students. But their their summative performance is what is being conveyed as their progress. And does not have any behavior component or participation component. All of that is separated from the academic performance and is reflected in other places such as the effort and behavior grade. And in formative data as well.
I see, so it's about giving feedback to students on their performance, not feedback about the world language program?
Correct.
Okay, I think I misunderstood. Thanks.
Jim?
Thank you, David. Thank you, Tanya. I had a couple of questions. Could you just speak to the needs of ELs, English learners and how they fit in with the world language program? Also, are there students who do not, who opt out? Perhaps they are on IEPs and they need more time with something other than world language. I mean, do we do that? I'm just asking how that works. And also how it works with transfer students who are coming in. Fourth grade, never had it and they're, you know, the kids are at intermediate low and this is a novice. So those were just some of the questions I have.
Yeah, so world language is for everyone. And so we want all students, whatever their linguistic background, you know, whenever they arrive at the school. Teachers are really being mindful of, you know, building their lessons around, you know, what is the baseline expectation? What am I going to do for the students who just arrived from another district and never had a day in the world language before? And so on the other hand, what am I going to do for the students who are already meeting expectations? So that differentiation becomes very much a lens through which teachers are executing their instruction and are thinking about their planning. There are some cases where you know, a student who has an IEP and needs or other services and is not able to take world language. And similarly with English learners, they also have to meet a minimum English proficiency. And so sometimes they will also join our program at a later time. So it is a case by case basis. But in an ideal world, we are having everyone K twelve having a world language education.
Thank you. And could you say a word about an immersion program? Some districts have early on kindergarten and kindergarten, French immersion, Spanish, whatever it might be. Done that? Have we thought about that?
So I will tell you, we, not to my knowledge. So what is really fantastic about our program is that we have a baseline expectation of ninety percent or more of target language use in every classroom. Oftentimes, teachers exceed that. However, you know, we are by nature a second language beginner program. And so I would say that we offer really immersive experiences for learners. And you know, the more target language that is spoken and used will just grow the development that much faster.
But just to be clear, that the ninety percent is of the world language, by the world language teacher. That's not of the classroom teacher, correct? I mean, that's, they may not know the language.
That's correct, of the world language teachers and the students. So the teachers are giving students all of the supports that they would need, such as reference material, sentence starters, visuals. So that they are also engaging in the target language as much as possible.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Hi, thanks, Tanya. Thanks for coming and sharing this information with us. Suzanne actually touched on one of my questions and I wanted to just follow up. Could you, could you just clarify the number of typical minutes in the different grade bands of instruction? Like, I think it sounds like there's a breakdown between like K two, three, five, six, eight, and maybe nine, twelve or some bands. Could you just sort of clarify that? And then I have a follow-up question after that.
Sure, absolutely. So our K two band is receiving sixty minutes of instruction each week. In grades three to five, it's ninety minutes. Sixth grade, it right now is one hundred and thirty-five minutes. And then our seventh and eighth graders who are having daily instruction, that's about two hundred and twenty-five.
And then nine to twelve, I don't, that's a ten day cycle. I don't know how that works. That's more complicated.
That's going to be for my partner, Rachel E.
Okay. Okay, is Rachel with us or no, not tonight? Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, and then could you, this is a more philosophical question and maybe we don't, maybe we don't have space for this tonight. So this is just a question that I'm, as I was listening to you talk. I was just thinking, as we have students who enter into some switch points, you mentioned like sixth grade and ninth grade where students can switch a language and thinking about building language proficiency. When students switch languages and then they become novice, right? So we're building them through different levels of novice and then building into intermediate. And then they switch and they go back into like a new level of novice. How does their K five say experience in a first in a second language where they may not have built proficiency in that second language and then move into a new sort of second language? If they don't have proficiency, how does that experience in that K five model help prepare them for that six, eight or a new ninth grade language? And philosophically, do you understand what I'm sort of getting at?
I'll take a crack. You let me know, okay? So some, what fifth graders bring to any language, if they are switching is a really wide set of skill in terms of understanding how they would approach, you know, hearing a different language. What are the types of, beyond using their ears, they know their eyes are incredibly important to watch out for gestures for using the teacher resources. And so they are well accustomed to already being in that environment. And certainly are able to apply, you know, many of the skills that they have developed in a different context. However, you know, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, you know, having to switch a language kind of sets you up at the very beginning. Once again, and you know, certainly that is true. And at the same time, you know, I think it's really important that our students have choice. That's one of the few things that they can choose as middle schoolers. And so oftentimes they are doing it for really strong interest in another language. Fresh start. And so, you know, we want to encourage that as well.
No, no, I would, I completely, yes, I very much agree with that. I think the more kids are invested in it, the more they're going to really engage with learning and picking up that language. And I think that's really important for them to have those choice points and especially as they, as they become more mature learners and really can engage with that. I think that's really important for them to become more, you know, to become invested and and so I think that's really important. I totally understand why we do that. I think that makes a lot of sense. So I'm just trying to sort of like, and I think there's value, there's great value in like being exposed to language, to being exposed to culture. I mean, I think I had sort of my own thoughts and I was just looking for you to help me add to like my understanding. So that's why I was asking you that question, like, help me to like be able to be more well spoken about it and to like add to my own understanding of our program. Oh, no, I had another question and now my eyesight, I'm getting older, my eyesight is bad and I can't. Oh. When, when they, you said it's not the K twelve, oh, it's sixty, you said not yet ninety, is that the recommendation? Okay.
That's correct. Yes, it's ninety minutes minimum.
Okay, that's, that would be a recommended level. We're at sixty right now. And that's, is that parsed out in smaller segments of time across the week? And is there typically, is it, am I? Having had young children go through the system a while ago, I have middle schoolers in high school now. Are there, is there a classroom teacher at the same time, like the classroom teacher there and the language, world language teacher at the same time? Is that just in K two? Am I remembering this correctly or no? Please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that, you're correct. Right now, the classroom teacher is also there or in K one, it can be the para as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mariah?
Thanks and thanks, Tanya, for the presentation. I had a quick question, which was, and apologies if I missed this. Am I remembering right that we're doing world language program review right now or am I misremembering?
I would love for that to be the case, not to my knowledge.
Okay, so I must be confusing you. Thanks. Linus, is, Linus is here, of course. Is World Language Program Review on the schedule to happen?
I'm with Leslie, give context for that.
Okay.
Yep. So, so as of right now, it is not in the immediate queue for a program review, no?
I'm wondering, Mariah, maybe thinking of the EL program review that we just?
It could be. It could be. I'm just being initials confused. I guess I would really, I would really, I, I, if I remember correctly, there was some discussion that World Language was supposed to have a program review within five years of the program founding back in two thousand nine, I guess it was. And I guess I just want to put in a big plug for accelerating that process to really, to get some concrete data on the impact of the program. As I think it's really important. And as we're hearing from Tanya, you know, not all of the program elements have been implemented. And I feel like we should be committing to it fully if we find that it has this benefit. Or deciding how we're gonna re, redeploy it if it's not doing, in its current, you know, implementation, if it's not doing what we want it to do. So I, I would just really like to see that happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mariah, I'll just jump in and say, you know, we have a, we're undergoing a number of reviews now. And so one of the things we're gonna do this summer is just look across content and start to prioritize what needs to get done. It is a capacity issue in terms of what programs, program reviews we can get done, in what timeframe, and how well we can do them. And then also in terms of the various elements of the program, we're really, and, and Tanya, I, I just also want to stop and give a shout out to Tanya. Tanya is an amazing coordinator to work with. She is absolutely collaborative, puts students first, but is also a, a major supporter of educators, and she's just been amazing to work with. She's just very solutions oriented. So I just wanted to say that with you here, Tanya. I'm very thankful. And, and world, world language is tricky. Because I want to be forthcoming and say that when the override was passed for world language, along with the funding for it, was supposed to come more time in the school day, and that didn't happen. And so this is where we, the rubber really hits the road. Our time on learning requirements, you know, it, it, it's, it's all one big puzzle. And so without having that additional time added, that's what's make, makes it difficult to have the ninety minutes three times a week versus the sixty minutes that we have. And so it's, it's all interconnected and definitely gives us a lot to think about.
Leslie, could you say a little more about that? I'm not sure I've ever heard that before. About the time, the extra time that didn't materialize.
Yep. So I don't have the documents right in front of me, but I know that when the initial override was, was passed, along with it was a request to basically extend the school day so that we could incorporate world language more easily into the school day. But that time was not added. The, the programmatic parts were added except for the time that came with it. So that, that is part of, that is part of the complexity. I mean, there are a number of other.
You know why? Do you know why? I can ask another time. It's fine. It's out of the scope of this. Anyway, I just want to second what you said about Tanya, and I want to say that as someone who went through the Brookline pre-world language, language program, when it was just starting, I think in seventh grade, I still had an amazing world language experience with my teachers in elementary school at the high school. And it was really a wonderful program then, and I'm sure my own kids have had their experiences now, which have been great as well. So thank you, Tanya, and thank you to the whole team.
Thank you.
So a question I have, you mentioned that the classroom teacher is typically in the class during world language instruction with the world language and teacher. And could you explain why that occurs? Is there some kind of extra support that's being provided by the classroom teacher?
Yeah, so when, when the program began, you know, we had, you know, teachers who were, you know, pushing into classrooms, you know, sometimes up to ten classrooms a day. And so the classroom teacher was really important in terms of, you know, just helping to make sure there was, you know, from logistics space, you know, in the for the cart to pass through, to, you know, helping to, you know, set expectations around, you know, classroom, particularly because the, you know, the world language teacher just does not have the, the contact time with the students in the way that the classroom teacher does. And so having that collaborative approach really helped, you know, teachers get to know the spaces, get to know the students, and also get to know effective strategies from, from the classroom teachers as well.
Another question I have, you talked about measuring students based on their progress and differentiation. So should we take that to mean that there is some kind of assessment that takes place toward the beginning of the year to see where a student is at with that world language? And then assess based upon the progress that each student makes, as opposed to some kind of objective criteria for all?
I'm not sure that I understand. Can you repeat, can you rephrase that?
Is each student assessed primarily on where, on that student's own progress as opposed to a metric that would apply to all students?
Oh, thank you. Yes, that helped. So we have year-end performance targets for each grade. And so what we are, are doing is letting learners know where they are in relation to that goal. So, of course, we will have, you know, some learners there, some learners extending beyond what the target is. But certainly, all of the feedback has the eye on, you know, where we hope students to be at the end of the year.
And a related question, to what extent is there encouragement for native speakers to take a language that's not their native language? Because occasionally that might happen.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, that, that's complex. Because there, there's a great amount of variation in, in native speakers and their needs. And so, you know, it, it is really, you know, our work is to inform the community about, you know, the nature of our program. You know, what are the language goals for, you know, each language? And, you know, it's, it's really a choice that, that the students and the families have to make. You know, I think, I think there, there are, are benefits to, for some learners to, to continue in the language. And then there, there's, you know, higher level courses in the high school as well. Where learning another language and, and trying it out for a couple of years is, is also really fantastic. So it, it, it really depends on, on the situation. But we really, you know, just, just want to be very transparent about our, our, our program and, and, you know, what we are able to do within the context of a beginning learner program. And then ultimately, it's the family's choice.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thanks. I just had a quick question. How, how long have we had the program that starts in kindergarten? Do you know, Tanya?
Two thousand and five.
Oh, we've had it that long. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to say thank you again for, for coming and sharing this information and for, for your enthusiasm for world language. So just thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
It has been wonderful to be here. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Alvarado? No, seeing none. Thank you very much for coming and for presenting to us this evening. And we will now move on to our next agenda item, which is budget updates. Sam, your turn.
Thank you very much. I'll try to catch us up a little bit. But I, you know, so I want to talk about briefly the current year, which we're in the process of going, getting to the end and closing, and then what we're doing for next year. Again, high-level brief. So we'll start with this year. Since we have all the contracts settled, which I'm very pleased, we're in the process of paying retro pay. And so that's ongoing, but moving along very nicely, such that, and again, I've already sent communications out to all impacted people. We have paid retro to food service already. We've paid retro to secretaries already. Next week, for the final teacher paycheck, which is the twenty-fourth, we're paying retro for two years for units A and B. That's almost completed and calculated. And on the thirtieth, we're paying custodian retro. And so right now, everything's tracking very nicely. I'm not expecting any bad surprises. I'll have a much better idea after the twenty-fourth, when all the retros and the final teacher payroll lands. But again, so far, so good. You'll get a recap early in January. We do close this year. Jan, July, not January, sorry, July thirteenth, Wednesday. And I must say, and I want to give a shout out to the business office staff because they've been working pretty hard. Paying bills, again, the entire business office staff has just been working very hard. They're very dedicated, and I can't say enough. I also can't say enough for the town finance department that has supported us, especially in the area of payroll, because we're down a position, and they have really stepped up. Justin Casanova Davis, who I spoke with today, who is the acting finance director, and his entire staff, who I told him, I personally wanted him to know and that I recognized them. So, so why don't you let, let you know that. Moving and pivoting to F-23, as you know, town meeting voted a budget. And, and at this point, we're looking to, and I have a consultant, her name is Ruth Quinn. And, and she's doing wonderful work. I think I mentioned before, she was instrumental in helping get us to a clean end-of-year report audit for the first time in Brookline history. And now I've got her helping, and I'm, I'm laying out the, the plan is to revisit our chart of accounts to the way I frame it, instead of us working for Munis, to make Munis work for us. And so that's well on its way. And then finalizing those budgets, loading them into F-23, which we're very close to getting done, tying out the reductions that we agreed to, to balance. And then Ms. Quinn is going to work again in consultation with me in my office to then work on job codes and position control to, again, have Munis work for us, instead of us working for Munis and making sure that the system can better track our budget, because as you know, I said before, eighty-seven percent of our appropriation is personnel. And so the war and the battle and everything is won or lost with personnel. And so I, I feel optimistic that we're going to maximize the use of the, of the, of the accounting system that we have. I think I'll stop there unless there's any specific questions, but I think that gives a pretty good flavor of why we're all very busy, but it's been very productive.
Stephen?
Thanks, Sam. Sorry to be late, everyone. But the Lawrence concert was wonderful. Sam, I'm just curious for more specifics. What kinds, what, what are you looking to track more? What, what details are you wanting Munis to provide that we haven't yet started to get from Munis?
Well, it's really what the state and the federal government require. And what we've had to do is have a consultant, or we would, we would have to take data. I'll give you an example. It's largely in the K-8 curriculum. And I'm not blaming anybody. It's just the chart had, pick, pick any department, pick ELA. So ELA was budgeted and expended for the whole K-8, but we have to report it school by school, or we'll get audit findings. We had a clean report, remember? And so that was due to paying a consultant to do painstaking chopping and dicing of data. System can do this, but we've got to dice it and put it in diced, both budget and expense. And so that work is being, has been done for twenty-three. That, that's an example. So across the eight K-8 schools for ELA, Baker, Heath, you got Driscoll, that budget is, is allocated by student enrollment. And then the expenses when they charge are equally allocated.
Thanks, Sam. That's really good to know. Are there, are there other, are there other kinds of tracking that you'd like to do, not for the sake of compliance, but because you believe it to be a good practice?
Personnel, again, eighty-seven percent of our budget is personnel. So position control is another area that, when done right, gives you a really good idea that, well, it's more important that people are charged the right place. What I have found, and again, it's not about blame, it's about, you know, the beep especially. We're paying people, you know, most, most important is we pay people the right amount. They don't care, I'll use, they don't care how the sausage is made. They just want the sausage, which is their pay. But, you know, beep, the charges, the, the salaries aren't hitting beep, they're hitting, let's say, OSS instead. And so in, in the aggregate, we're fine. But then again, that needs to be cleaned and chopped and reallocated. And the goal of having this structure, structure and workflow, is having the expense hit the right place the first time. And so that's what I'm hoping to accomplish by this.
Thanks, Sam.
Any other questions for Sam? Any further comments on the budget updates? All right, seeing none, that leads us to the next agenda item. School committee actions, proposed revision of public schools of Brookline policy manual, section D, fiscal management, first reading. Just by way of quick introduction, yesterday, the finance and policy subcommittees convened a joint meeting. Most of us who are on this, in this meeting tonight were present for that as well. We looked at the entire fiscal D section from top to bottom. Certain topics that generated a lot of conversation were grants and gifts from private sources, budget transfer authority, post-high school scholarships, revolving funds listings. Currently, there are about five or six revolving funds that are listed, and there's discussion about whether they should all be there, whether none of them should be there, what the purpose of that section is, and how we might want to amend it. There was a discussion around the definition of cost centers. We had a discussion regarding petty cash accounts. We also talked about just broader goals of the policies, such as metric-based budget evaluations. We discussed school site councils and their role in budget development, whether the superintendent should be consulting directly with school site councils in developing the budget or relying on the school improvement plans as the means by which to incorporate input from the school site councils. Also discussed the prohibition on glorified solicitations in school buildings, and whether that belongs in the fiscal D section, or should be embodied elsewhere in some other policy. And there were a lot of questions that subcommittee members had for Sam in particular, and some more information that we wanted to have access to before engaging in further wordsmithing. But nevertheless, the policy subcommittee voted to refer to the full school committee, this first overview essentially of the fiscal D sections, that we could move the discussion along to the full committee. And I'll now go to Mariah for anything you'd like to add.
Thanks, David. I don't have anything to add.
All right. Any thoughts from committee members? Any thoughts from committee members? So I guess where we're at essentially is, uh, we did ask of a fair amount of Sam to get back with us. And once we have that information, I think we'll be prepared to submit an updated detailed draft that goes beyond our conceptual ideas from yesterday into concrete specifics that we can then review in time for a second read.
Before you call, before you call on Andy, I just want to add one background thing, which is that the policies that were drafted, um, used both the Mass Association of School Committee, um, baseline proposed finance section, and then added back, um, some of the local, um, some of our pre-existing policies, um, that I thought would be a good practice to have in there. And then some other modifications as well. But just so people know, it wasn't completely made up out of thin air. It had this, um, pretty strong foundation out of the sort of best practices, um, policies.
Andy?
Uh, yeah, I actually just wanted to follow up on that to thank Mariah for taking the initiative and sort of drafting this entire suite of, of, of interlocked, uh, policies that no one else, I think, could have done, uh, such a, such a job. Thanks.
Thanks, Andy. That's so nice. I would add that it's been 40 years, so it's time.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then it's on to subcommittee and liaison reports. And I think finance and policy, essentially, we just did that.
I actually have a little more when Suzanne's done.
Sure. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Yeah, this is actually, I'm sneaking this in, David, and I'm not trying to surprise you, but I just wonder if you could just comment for the public how we've taken the evaluation from the superintendent off our public discussion tonight and where we're putting it, just in case, because it was posted for a while. And so, would you mind doing that?
Sure. So we decided to take a little more time on the superintendent evaluations. A couple of school committee members, uh, have had some health issues that delayed their submissions of the evaluation. So I, I don't yet have all the evaluations in. Uh, Dr. Guillory has stated that he would like to be able to have the evaluations at some point in early July so that he can utilize those in his strategic planning for next year. So we are adding a meeting that has, uh, already been docketed for July 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, where we will cover the superintendent evaluations, uh, vote on it. And the other agenda item will be a possible vote on a new deputy superintendent of student services. All right. So getting back to subcommittee liaison reports, finance, go ahead, Mariah.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to provide one accounts payable, um, update because I had presented the past month last week, but this week, um, I signed off on And, um, of note in there was, um, I can't remember exactly how much it was, but it was part of the, um, purchase and installation of the dishwashers for the buildings. Um, if you recall, last fall, I think it was, we had received a generous gift from, I believe, an anonymous donor to, um, allow for the retrofitting, um, of the buildings to get, um, dishwashers and also, um, silverware and, um, re, plates and, and so forth. And so, um, that was just signed off on. And it's my understanding that, um, for, basically four of the buildings will be done over the summer and the rest will be done in time for Thanksgiving. So by Thanksgiving, we'll have all of the buildings using reusable, which is really exciting.
Thank you, Mariah. Who else would like to give a subcommittee or liaison report?
I just wanted, sorry, I just wanted, um, update on the Driscoll building project. I want to make sure that everybody saw in their email that there are tours available the week of the 27th. And, um, just to sign up on the Google form that went around, if you're interested in going on the tour.
Okay, thank you. All right. So if there are no other liaison or subcommittee updates, we can move on to new business, or any new business? All right, seeing none. I'm going to move that we need an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts.
Jen has her hand up. Jen has new business.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jennifer.
No, sorry. I actually, um, it's new old business. I just wanted to say thank you um, to Robin for adding on to our agenda, the thing we discussed, um, under our last new business, which was the addition of items on the calendar to our agenda. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I noticed it was there and that was exciting. Um, so thank you. So.
All right. So our next item is proposed executive session. I'm going to move that we need an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter 30A, section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the BEU unit A grievances. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body, my modesty school to Clark Road, Brookline, Massachusetts. And purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the June 9th, 2022 meeting. And, and we will not be returning to open session. So everyone, uh, received a link to the executive session and that includes, that concludes this evening's open session.
Oh, I'll say. We had to, we had to vote to go into.
Yeah, that's right. It's okay.
Okay. Yeah. So I moved it. Do we have a second? Thank you, Suzanne. Jennifer, your vote?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. We will not be returning to open session and that concludes our open session. See everyone on, over on the other link.